Robert Felsigno.
Here.
George Hennessy.
Yes.
Joseph Porto.
Yes.
Donald Thomas.
Yes.
Michael Smith.
Yes.
Vincent Luteri.
We have four. This time I... I don't need any more. Are there any original missions in the last meeting of the light first seat? Any questions, original mission? I need a second. Second, vote for his testimony. Second, take a roll call, Susan.
Robert Felsigno.
Yes.
George Hennessy.
Yes.
Joseph Porto.
Yes.
Donald Thomas.
Yes.
Michael Smith.
Yes.
Vincent Luteri.
The appeal, field hearing, number 17-18. One and nine, Barberry Road. Appeal of cease and desist action of the CEO. Parenthesis amended cease and desist order for the slashing of trees. Hearing continued from July 13, 2017. I think, Christopher, it'll be your attorney's turn at this time to present your case.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Attorney Peter Alter for the appellants. Before Attorney Conway and Mr. Soto begin, I have a matter that I want to bring to the board's attention as a procedural matter. I had advised Attorney Zulo earlier this week that I felt that his firm had a conflict of interest in representing or acting on behalf of the board and also representing the town of East Haven as it's involved in a substantial matter of litigation with my clients. I raised that with Mr. Zulo. He responded, and I want to put on the record that I continue to believe that he has a conflict.
Okay.
Prepared a memo, which I've already shared with Attorney Zulo and Attorney Conway, that I want to submit it for the record.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, it's our position on behalf of the appellants that the law firm of Mr. Alfred Zulo and Mr. Joseph Zulo is involved in a matter of litigation that has been commenced against the town of East Haven by my clients to the point where Attorney Joseph Zulo issued a public statement in that regard indicating, at least in my opinion, a position of advocacy for the town of East Haven. And you're being advised by his partner in this matter. And the zoning board of appeals fulfills a uniquely independent role in the determination in cease and desist orders. You act effectively in a trial de novo position. And we believe that it's inappropriate for the lawyer who is defending and acting on behalf of the town of East Haven in litigation to be advising you in this matter, since the outcome in this matter may have a substantial impact on the outcome of that litigation. So I raised that by filing the memo that I filed. I outlined my correspondence to Attorney Zulo, his response, and the issues that I raised as a result of his response. Joseph Zulo referred to or characterized my clients as bullies in his public statement, although it's our belief that we are taking every legal effort we're entitled to to protect property rights and that to offer such an opinion at the same time as offering opinion or advice to this board is not proper. Second, its other client, the town of East Haven, has a vested interest in the way this matter turns out. And it is very difficult, in fact, I believe impossible, for a lawyer to serve two masters, which in this case Attorney Zulo are compelled to do. Attorney Zulo, when I raised this issue with him, indicated that he consulted with an attorney to get another opinion. I was quite surprised and disappointed in the fact that the attorney he chose to consult with is the mayor's personal attorney. The attorney referenced in the email is the same attorney who has represented the mayor in various matters of litigation. And again, it's hard to believe that that's a person who has an unbiased view towards this matter. And finally, I respectfully disagree with Attorney Zulo's position that only the board has the right to raise the issue of a conflict. My client has a right to a fair and impartial hearing before the zoning board of appeals. And I believe that right is compromised under multiple representations of the Zulo and Zulo law firm. When Attorney Zulo offers counsel to the board, he must act only on behalf of the board. And yet, he sits with another client that has a vested interest in the outcome of not only this hearing but pending litigation. I referenced the rules of professional conduct in my memo, and I will quote this comment: "Even where there is no direct adverseness, a conflict of interest exists if there is a significant risk that a lawyer's ability to consider, recommend, or carry out an appropriate course of action for the client will be materially limited as a result of the lawyer's other responsibilities or interests." These lawyers have an obligation to our clients to exercise independent professional judgment. And unfortunately, I believe that the independent professional judgment can't be rendered to this board by an attorney that has a conflict, as Attorney Zulo does. I'm asking that the board consider this matter and, if necessary, ask Attorney Zulo to recuse himself from acting as counsel to the zoning board of appeals in this matter so that you can have counsel that has no other client that would be in conflict or have a significant interest in the outcome of this matter. I had made Attorney Conway and Attorney Zulo aware of my intention to raise this issue. I provided them with a copy of the memo as soon as it was prepared. I advised Attorney Zulo on July 31 of my concerns, and I continue to have those concerns. Our interest is in a fair and impartial hearing before this board, and my concern is that legal advice rendered by someone who has a conflict of interest, take that for liberation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor.
I did have an opportunity to agree with you again. I don't agree with it. I have no objection. I have no objection to Attorney Zulo representing the board in this case.
By way of additional clarification, I called Attorney Larry Strickharry because Attorney Joseph Zulo was on vacation, and Attorney Larry Strickharry was the town attorney prior to Joseph Zulo making comments. I mean, I thought it was appropriate to ask him, based on his wealth and experience of having a higher outside counsel, there's various times when he was representing the county of East Haven in recognition of confidence. And he indicated that in this situation, he did not believe there was a conflict. After I sent my D-mail to the applicant's counsel, I also sent it to the attorney for the grievance committee for the district department, who rendered the opinion that there was no conflict in this matter, sent me a couple of informal opinions on it, said if the matter came before him, he would not find a proper cause, so no reason why, based on the statements that were given to him, why I could not represent this counsel, this counsel, this court, or knows. And in the past, I got numerous cases, when clients came before this court. And in the past, we've had counsel appointing for this court in matters where I felt it was done. My firm does not represent any of the departments in pending litigation. I do not represent any of the departments in this litigation. In fact, I had no involvement in the quarry file until the day before the last meeting. As far as I'm concerned, I know my job, my job is to advise you as to what the standard is in your review of the zoning enforcement officers' actions. We've had numerous hearings involving appeals of this actions in the last year. You noticed, Ken. I don't know you noticed, Ken. I'm going to give you the same advice that I gave you at all meetings. I don't believe there's any reason that we should be asked to recuse ourselves. And I find it particularly funny that you waited two days before this hearing to bring this up, because if it was an issue, we should have brought up a conflict. So I'm not going to leave this board without representation. Tonight is very important, Ken. So I would ask the board to deny Mr. the attorney for the applicant's motion. I believe it's frivolous, and I think it's just another attempt to intimidate this board. All we heard him say at the last meeting, remember? Illegal, 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 illegal. That's his big thing.
Come on.
Discuss it amongst yourselves and make a motion.
Any comments, Ken?
I don't see any way we continue without the attorney. I agree with the comments that he has always recused himself when he felt there was a conflict, so I don't see any reason to recuse himself.
Well, Mr. Zulo's presentation, I'm going to recommend that we deny Attorney Alter's request that he recuse himself, because basically at this type of a hearing, we're going to need some kind of counsel. And he's been with us basically on everything that we've ever done here. My recommendation is to deny the attorney's request to have him recuse himself, and I'd like a motion in a second on that.
What's the motion for again?
My motion is to deny the request.
My motion, the motion we did deny the request to recuse our attorney.
A second, Mr. [inaudible]. Okay. There was a motion in a second. Put the vote through, Susan.
Robert Felsigno.
I made the motion to deny.
George Hennessy.
Deny.
Joseph Porto.
Motion.
Donald Thomas.
Yes.
Michael Smith.
Yes.
Vincent Luteri.
Yes.
You'll be sitting, Congressman, Mr. Phil.
Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Good evening. My name is John Conway.
Oh, sorry.
Very good. I represent Mr. Soto, the zoning enforcement officer of the town of East Haven today. And it is my pleasure and honor to do so in front of this board. I've never met or spoken to any of people before, and I look forward to making my presentation on behalf of Mr. Soto today. I would like to start off by making sure I enter into the record what it is I intend to submit in terms of documents in supporting Mr. Soto's conduct. So I'd just like to make that record before I forget. I would like that in depth, but for shortness of time, a copy machine would allow it to occur. So if you bear with me, what I intend to introduce into the record in terms of documentation is as follows. First document is a judgment in a criminal case in the District of Connecticut, United States versus Frank Bencore Jr., in which he is found guilty of mail fraud and the deprivation of office services. The second document is the criminal complaint on which that conviction was based, including an affidavit from an FBI agent setting forth the conduct on which he was found guilty. The third document is a letter from Frank Bencore Jr. to Attorney Nick Minzio dated May 1, 2013. This is a letter that was located by Mr. Soto on a backup CD that was in the zoning, amongst the business records, electronic business records of the zoning enforcement office. My understanding for Mr. Soto is that with the arrest of Mr. Bencore, all of his files were backed up on a computer disk, and Mr. Soto went through that and located this document, which is dated May 1, 2013, and which provides, it speaks for itself obviously, but the relevance of this hearing is it provides the exact opposite opinion that Mr. Bencore issues in the November 10, 2014 letter relied on by the applicant. The next document I'd like to submit into the record is a document from Socinski Law Firm dated April 20, 2017, to Chairman Robert Felsigno. It is a document that also contains a number of exhibits to it. I know the board might be familiar with it. Quite frankly, a lot of the exhibits to it were documents that I intended to enter into the record, and it was a very convenient and efficient way to get a number of the relevant documents without killing my copy machine anymore or my organization levels. So that's the next document I'd like to enter into the record. The next document is the records from the town, East Haven's assessor's office with respect to the property. I think it shows what residential district the property is in. What zoning district, I should say. The next document are Mr. Soto's field notes with respect to the cease and desist orders that issued tonight. The next document are business records from the zoning office in the form of phone messages, many of which, not all of which, but many of which evidence citizens' complaints concerning conduct on the property that Mr. Soto received and investigated. I certainly think they're relevant to rebut the accusations that somehow his conduct here was based on improper motive or some sort of political motive, as opposed to what a zoning enforcement officer is supposed to do, which is respond to citizen complaints. So this is evidence of the citizens' complaints he received. The next document is a summary by Joyce Hollenbach of the complaints that the mayor's office received from citizens and persons, I don't know if they were all citizens of the town, concerning the conduct on the appellant's property that were related to Mr. Soto, and he investigated and resulted in the conduct that's before you today. The next document are a series of emails produced to be my Mr. Soto, between him and the town attorney, Joe Zulo, where Mr. Soto was actively and openly seeking advice concerning what enforcement action he should take based on the town's regulations, based on the observations of what occurred at the property. I think there was a very, there was an accusation made by an attorney about Mr. Soto doing something contrary to the... contrary to the legal advice of the town attorney. There, of course, was no evidence of that, but I did feel that I needed to rebut that, and I do believe these emails rebut that. The next document is the February 17, 2017 cease and desist order. The next document is an April 18, 2017 letter from the Energy Environmental, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, which was sent to the city of East Haven. It speaks for itself, but it also raises concerns about the conduct of the appellant on the property. It's the subject matter of the next hearing. The next document is an April 19, 2017 letter from the Regional Water Authority to Chairman Felsigno. Again, it raises concerns by that regulatory body about the conduct of the appellant on this property. And copy to Mr. Soto. The next document is the April 21, 2017 cease and desist order. The next document is the May 9 cease and desist order to both Mike Harton and Farm River Rock and Attorney Bruce Temkin, owned by a very real estate holding LLC. The next document is the request for stipulated disposition signed by Attorney Alter on behalf of his clients and Joseph Zulo, I think as the town of East Haven's attorney. It speaks for itself, but what it does is there were three cease and desist orders. The first two were regarding the slashing of trees, one dated February 17, one dated April 20. This disposition, it was an agreement to take the two slashing of trees, cease and desist orders, and roll them into one hearing, which is the hearing before tonight. The next document is the public meeting minutes of the town of East Haven Code Enforcement Committee meeting of Tuesday, May 9, 2017. And finally, the last document is a legal opinion that I read. The question presented is, assuming the appellant can establish a pre-existing non-conforming right to operate quarry, can the town regulate the property's use as a quarry, and if so, what degree and/or in what ways? I do intend to summarize my findings in that opinion at the conclusion of my presentation, but I think it arose in my mind that I am offering a legal opinion, and it is in direct contradiction to that four legal opinions offered by the appellant at the last hearing. So I think it appropriate for me to briefly describe and explain my background, education, and experience, so you can judge for qualifications of I have to render that opinion. I graduated from Lehigh University with honors in 1985. I graduated from Fordham Law Review, Fordham Law School in 1988, where I was editor of Law Review. Following law school, I had the honor of clerking on the United States Court of Appeals for the Second Circuit for Judge Mahoney. That's what brought me to Connecticut. I never slept a night in Connecticut until I worked for Judge Mahoney. Having slept a night in Connecticut, I fell in love with it and its shoreline and its beauty, and I've been here ever since. I have practiced civil litigation with the law firm of Wigan and Dana from 1988 to 2000. I was an equity partner there. I was trained by some of the best litigators in the state. United States District Judge Mark Kravitz was one of my mentors, Bill Doyle, Sean Sullivan, I was both trained there. I joined a law firm where I currently practice, A Blackman Fitzgerald in Wallingford, Connecticut in 2000, and have practiced there ever since. My practice is almost 85% devoted to civil litigation. I have an active practice in land use matters. I have successfully represented a CEO accused of bad faith tactics and sued in federal court for money damages with respect to conduct in the town of Brookfield, where I obtained summary judgment on all claims on that count. I have a similar experience with respect to representing the CEO of the town, handed in a lawsuit brought against that CEO accused of enforcement action of bad faith, and I obtained summary judgment in that count. I feel fully qualified to render the opinions that I rendered before you, and I would hope that you would accept them with an open mind. I will summarize them, as I said, at the conclusion of my presentation. With that, oh, and the only other thing I'd like to do is we will be presenting some photographs that Mr. Soto took and a video, and I will have an electronic disc, I guess that's what it's called, available for the board and for Mr. Alter. I will give Mr. Alter a copy of what it is I intend to submit.
May I proceed? Why can't we, we have the vice chair, Mr. [inaudible].
I'd just like to give a little overview of my intended presentation this evening. I intend to summarize the facts of Mr. Soto's involvement with the property leading to the subject enforcement orders. I've met with Mr. Soto. I'm an attorney experienced in summarizing facts. I think it's the most efficient way to proceed. Mr. Soto is right here. If I say anything wrong or he has anything to add, I've instructed him, he's free to do so. I also will be presenting to the board, this is my associate, James Ringbo, photos that Mr. Soto took on his investigation of the property, and I didn't take those photos, so Mr. Soto will be authenticating them to the board and explaining what it is he saw. I then will briefly summarize our rebuttal to the legal opinions presented by the appellant's, and respectfully, based on my presentation, ask the board to affirm the cease and desist orders issued by Mr. Soto. My understanding is we are proceeding with the appeal hearing 17-18, which involves the slashing of trees. My presentation intends to proceed chronologically through the cease and desist orders, the cease and desist order that is the subject of the 17-20 appeal, and I am anticipating making a motion to have my presentation incorporated into the hearing on that appeal. So that's how I intend to proceed this evening. Christopher Soto was hired to be the town's zoning enforcement officer on August 15, 2015. He was specifically hired to replace the town's former CEO, Frank Bencore Jr. Mr. Bencore resigned as the town's CEO following his arrest for one pound complaint filed in federal District Court in Haven on May 27, 2015, alleging that he committed mail fraud and theft of office services in violation of United States criminal law. Mr. Bencore pled guilty to those offenses on March 16, 2016. Mr. Soto's employee, prior to becoming CEO, involved, from the time period March 10, 2000 through March 23, 2009, he served our country for approximately nine years in the United States Army. The Army, Mr. Soto was deployed to Iraq on three separate occasions. On March 23, 2015, Mr. Soto received an honorable discharge from the Army, having risen during his career from the rank of private to a non-commission sergeant. Mr. Soto was then employed by the city of DeWeyden as a neighborhood specialist responsible for zoning officer in light enforcement. His first involvement with the town of East Haven was on August 15, 2015, when he was hired as a zoning enforcement officer. The appellant submitted that it was their position that Mr. Soto, in his issuing the CMD orders, quote, "has either made a mistake in applying the law to Farm River Rock quarry operations, or his actions were taken even though he knows that his position is legally unsupportable because of improper politically motivated interference by the town." That's what they said, and submitted in their written documentation. Appellant submitted no proof at the hearing. Mr. Soto acted in bad faith or improper motive in issuing the CMD orders. The facts that I will present to the board will prove that Mr. Soto's issuance of the CMD orders were a result of his decision based on objective facts observed by him that the appellant's conduct constituted violations of the town's zoning regulations, and more importantly, that he concluded that if the appellant's were not ordered to cease their reckless, unregulated operations, the safety of persons in the town would be jeopardized. The appellant's had the opportunity to present evidence that Mr. Soto had improper motives, and they presented no evidence to support the allegations they made. The wholly unsupported accusations by the appellant's that Mr. Soto, who proudly served our country in the United States Army, acted with improper motive, is and was offensive and should not be repeated in these proceedings. Mr. Soto's conduct with respect to this property, to the best of his recollection, occurred around the time he first was hired by East Haven. He toured East Haven with Chairman Felsigno so that he could become acquainted with the town and its related zoning districts. During one of those tours, Mr. Soto recalls viewing the property located at 1 and 99 Barberry Road, and specifically recalls with respect to the issues in these appeals, the south side of the property being sloped upward from Barberry Road, and the slope being rather steep and covered by a forest of trees. He did not observe any quarry activity occurring on the ridge or the slope. The next involvement with the property occurred on February 17, 2017, the next involvement with respect to cease and desist orders here and the conduct issue. When his office received a phone call from a neighbor, Joseph Keparo, a neighbor to the property, who complained that there had been significant activity on the property involving a concentrated and professional effort to clear cut several acres of trees from the sloped property on the south of the property, leaving the Barberry Road. In response to this unsolicited citizen complaint, Mr. Soto drove to the property and inspected the property, and he took the following photos. Chris, if you could just explain what these photos are and what they show.
So what you're seeing here is the property of the Barberry Road. From Barberry Road, facing towards the intersection of Barberry and the Road Road, that's the slope that you see down there. that you see down there is pointing towards the intersection of Barbary and Rowley Road. This is a picture approximately from the same location, but facing the other way, the slope that you see is facing up Barbary Road.
Mr. Soto, has the condition of the property changed from when you first observed it in 2015?
Yeah, yes, at this point you're seeing the property pretty much bare and trees, which is not how it had been a couple days prior to that. This photograph is kind of an access road on the property that is fairly close to the intersection of Barbary and Rowley Road. You have, the slope leads into the intersection of Barbary and Rowley Road, you have the access road, and then to the right of the access road is a creek and a portion of land that is like wetlands. And that would be the creek right there, and the background is Rowley Road, and kind of, with only a dip, and the trees kind of form the natural valleys where the creek runs through the property. This is, the road as it goes away from you, and it's Rowley Road, and what you see here is kind of the other side of that hill, and towards the far right you can see some of the rock piles. Towards the far left, down at the embankment of the trees, is where they stacked up all the logs at that point. And then this is another picture of the rock piles on the property.
Based on the observations of Mr. Soto, as he's just described in the photos he just depicted, he determined that the conduct on the property that was depicted there constituted an ongoing, quote, "slashing of trees," an activity that is prohibited by Section 31 of the town's zoning regulations unless the landowner or the person engaging that conduct applies for and receives a temporary special exception to do that conduct by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Having reached that conclusion, Mr. Soto contacted the town attorney, John Joseph Zulo, advised him of the results of inspection, and sent out a draft cease and desist order. Those emails in which Mr. Soto consulted with town council before issuing the order are in the record. Attorney Zulo and Mr. Soto discussed the CMD order, exchanged emails, and it was approved by the town attorney. The cease and desist order said that they required the appellant to stop the slashing of trees. It also specifically said that in order to resolve this problem, they should file an application with the Planning and Zoning Commission to receive a special exception to conduct that activity. The appellant's chose not to file that application. Specifically, the cease and desist order provided, "In order to resolve this problem, you must file for a temporary special exception in accordance with the provisions of Section 31 of the Town of East Haven zoning regulation. Upon approval of the special exception, you may resume these activities." The appellant's filed a timely appeal to that cease and desist order, and claimed in their appeal that by virtue of Mr. Biancor's 2014 letter, which was discussed extensively in the appellant's submission, their activity on the property is not subject to Section 31 of the zoning regulations. The next material event occurred when, on March 31st, 2017, Mr. Soto received a call from Mr. Cifaro, who's a neighbor of the property, to the property, informing Mr. Soto that persons on the property were continuing to dig out tree stumps on the site, and were doing digging work with heavy equipment that was causing rocks and earth to roll down the hill and create a dangerous situation. In response to this, Mr. Soto contacted Judy DeCine, Judy DeCine with the state's attorney's office, to inquire as to his enforcement options to stop this dangerous situation. He understood at that point that, having filed an appeal, they were allowed to continue the activity, and DeCine suggested to him that he file an amended appeal if he felt that the slashing of trees, which he did by the uprooting of the trees, was continuing. Mr. Soto's next, I think that's, again, relevant to see who he contacted in connection with proceeding here. There was obviously, as I said, some sort of accusations that what he did was politically motivated or in bad faith. Well, contacting the state's attorney, who has no political role, is not something that someone does with that, with that motive. Mr. Soto's next involvement with the property occurred on April 20th, 2017, when again the town zoning enforcement office received complaints from neighbors that there was activity on the property consisting of tree stumps and roots being removed and soil beneath the trees being disturbed. And specifically, the town zoning enforcement office received several messages from persons complaining about activity by the appellant's at One Barbary. One message, which is in the record, indicated, quote, "Four-by-four rock rolled off quarry and is sitting in the middle of the road. It poses a danger. I don't know who to call." In response to these citizen complaints, Mr. Soto went to the appellant's property to inspect. He took the following photographs in the morning. Can you tell him what that depicts, Mr. Soto?
So what you're seeing here is Barbary Road. To the right of the road is the mountain that you saw previously in the other pictures, and that there would be, by the side of the road would be the boulder that we've got called about. That would be their machine on top of the mountain excavating dirt, and I'm not sure if you can see it. Right about where the machine is, I don't know if you can see the trail, but that's kind of a scouring trail of where you can tell that rock is rolling up the belt scouring It's another picture from the same vantage point. Again, some of the same trails. If you look, you can see some of those indentations going on.
In the morning?
That was in the morning.
And then he took a video of the activity that was going on.
So what you're seeing occurring there, what was happening with the rock sliding, is you can see that rock is really, like, almost on the surface of that, and they were scraping off there, rock was coming off loose and rolling down the hill.
In response to the, what he perceived to be, quite frankly, what I think the video depicts and the photographs depict, to be an urgent safety situation. A, the town public works had to be called to have the boulder removed, and, or else someone might strike that boulder, seriously injure themselves, and then there might be a real lawsuit against the town. And he, the other, so he called Department of Public Works to get him to remove it, and then he went onto the property and spoke to a Mr. Harton, and told him that what he was doing was causing boulders to roll down that hill onto the street. Mr. Harton said...
The Zarden informed me that the excavators shouldn't have been up on top there doing that, and that a berm should have been built in order to prevent rock from rolling down the hill.
Mr. Soto returned to the site that afternoon and took the following photographs.
So in response to the rock rolling down the hill, they had someone erect the berm that you see here, and so, again, this vantage point is on Barbary Road. The slope of the hill points towards the intersection of Barbary and Rowley Road. Just a closer-up shot of the picture that you previously saw.
And Mr. Soto, just so the record's clear, that steep slope when you observed it in 2015 had trees on it?
Yes.
Do you believe that the removal of trees caused a safety problem to be exacerbated?
Yes, and generally, when you, in general, when you remove vegetation off of slopes, it presents a problem with water running off and destabilizes the slope. That's, again, another vantage point. What I was trying to capture here was kind of the size of the berm, in order to determine if the berm is sufficiently old back end rock to continue to slide all the way up. This is, again, from Rowley Road. If you look at the base of the tree that has the bouldering on it, you'll see that the earth has been disturbed down there. That's where the boulder, their initial boulder had landed, and then you can see, again, you can continue to see kind of the scouring of the side of the mountain as the rock rolled down, and then the fresh ground that they had just done earlier.
As a result of those observations, Mr. Soto followed DeCine's advice and amended his cease and desist order, and again, ordered One Barbary Real Estate and also its tenant, Mike Harton, who he spoke to, Farm River Rock Road, to cease and desist the work that was ongoing there. In this cease and desist order, he also said, "Any additional, any measures taken to protect the safety of the general public must be verified by a certain professional to be adequate measures for the operations taking place. Upper sedimentation erosion controls will also be installed and maintained around the perimeter area where work is being conducted, and any other areas that require such control measures." Mr. Soto repeated the order to the appellant's again. "In order to resolve this problem, you must file for a special exception in accordance with the provisions of Section 31 of the Town of East Haven zoning regulations. Upon approval of the special exception by the Planning and Zoning Commission, you may resume these activities on the site." They did not follow that direction by Mr. Soto, and still have not followed that direction by Mr. Soto, to file a application with Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Soto, between April 23rd, 2017, and May 9th, when the cease and desist order, which is the subject of the next hearing, was issued, went to the site, also consulted with the town engineer, and made some attempts to try to instill upon these property owners the need to make safe their site and to provide plans, drawings, verifications, and specifications by professionals. I'd like Mr. Soto to just briefly summarize those communications between April 29th, 2009, and May 9th.
So at one point, myself, the town engineer, met with Alan Tempton, John Patton, and Mr. Mike Harton, and out on the site, actually, right at the corner where the rock was on the road, we discussed with them that this presented an unsafe situation. The town engineer asked for professional drawings showing how they would be excavating and where they would be excavating. Mr. Patton represented to us at that point that he's been trying to get from the town what it is that we wanted, and at that point I said, "We need a special exception, this is what it would require." At all points, we stressed to them that them continuing to mix earth and berms was a continued violation of the order, and that at no point were we sure that the earth and berms were actually going to be sufficient to hold rocks. So we asked them to provide us some sort of engineering documentation to show us that that would be a proper course of action. Additionally, we stressed it several times, the sedimentation and erosion controls are a minimum needed to be installed properly.
Did they ever make any representations to you that they have engaged professional engineers?
Yes, when we met out in the field with them, they made a representation to us that they hired the firm of Malone and Broom to go ahead and create those documents that would show, you know, how they were going ahead or proceeding with the removal of the rock.
To date, have you ever been provided any documents by the appellant from the engineering firm Malone and Broom?
No.
Have you ever been provided any documents from any engineering firm sending forth any analysis as to how they would operate on that property in a safe manner? The next inspection is Jim's name. So on 4/21, he went back. Let's just briefly go through that.
So you're seeing, again, the same kind of note of rock on the Rowley Roadside, from the Rowley Barbary Road. The reason we're back here again is because there was some conversation with regards to the berm, and making sure that that berm is actually a sufficient berm. And we were told that they would go ahead and make it a half-deer berm and kind of improve it to make sure that no boulders got past it. So we're back here again looking at it. Again, this is primarily the Barbary Roadside, which you see in front of you, that silviation fences, I'm sure a lot of the board members will recognize, is intended to prevent kind of debris washing down with water. As you can see, it's not properly being maintained. We continue on kind of along the ridge line of the berm. So right here, what I, the picture I was attempting to grab is a picture of kind of like a side view of the berm to show that at some point the face of the berm would be higher than the slope that was leading into it. So you're kind of seeing the side of the berm. This is a picture of the sedimentation and erosion controls. Typically, what you see with S and E controls is there's a portion of the silviation fences is buried underneath ground, and the hay bales are staying in front of it to catch some of the debris, and then the silviation fence just drove the filter to the water. Same, same shot.
Did you observe that boulder up against that fence?
Yeah, so that is, that's one of the boulders up against the silviation fence. It's more, so here's kind of a decent look at the trench that they dug as you're coming down, as you're coming down the hill. So, and the precipice that you see down at the bottom would be the intersection of Barbary and Rowley. Just kind of more expanded view of the same road. That, the road that you see right there, that is Rowley Road, and then it's basically right on the berm. And I would just note, before it comes up, that before we went on the property to take the pictures, I did call Mike Harton, and I did ask that he think that if you would give me permission to inspect the berm and inspect the property. Mike Harton did call, I presume it was John Patton, and I was given permission to enter the property to take the pictures.
The next inspection. So Mr. Soto went back to the property on May 3rd and took these photographs.
So at this point, we're back inspecting because we've been, we've been told that the sedimentation and erosion controls have been installed properly, that they were installed by an engineering firm, and that everything was done legitimately, which is what they alluded to at the last hearing. What you'll notice is that the silviation fence is still driven, it still hasn't been dug and buried in, and the hay bales, which are typically placed close together to prevent debris flowing through, are still separated. So there you go. That is, that's the silviation fence along the access road, so on the right side of the silviation fence will be Rowley Road running parallel to it, and then the creek on the other side. That's another boulder at the bottom there. That's the other side of the fence with the hay bales, the opposite side of the shoulder. Same here. What you're seeing here now is the berm has been significantly, made significantly larger, except this time it's been placed at the bottom of the hill.
Then I believe inspected the site on May 8th. These are photographs from that inspection, one photograph.
So on May 8th, we received a call that they were blasting on the top of the hill. We made a trip out there, and what we found... Um, we made a trip out there and what we found was the, uh, drill rig preparing the site for blasting.
And that's what that photograph depicts?
Yes.
Did you, uh, based on your training, knowledge, and observations, think that if blasting occurred on that site and as depicted there, that would pose a safety risk to the citizens of the town?
To me, it would have appeared so. The site that you're looking at is right on top of where you saw the excavator, uh, kind of clearing dirt and rock off of there. If any of you folks have been to the site, um, it is not that far off the intersection from the corner of Barella Road and, uh, and Barbara Road.
Following that, um, inspection and consultation with officers of the town, including what's reflected in the minutes of the, what committee is that, Chris?
The, the, uh, so the, certain officials of the town itself, building official fire chief, police chief, uh, we meet at a regular code enforcement meeting to discuss, uh, quote, any code enforcement issues that we might be having throughout the time.
And was the results of the, of what you found reported at that meeting? At the site on May eighth?
Correct, so, uh, at a code enforcement meeting, uh, we were informed, uh, on May ninth that they had in fact applied for blasting permit, which cooperated our, our thought process that that was the, the drill preparing, uh, the site for blasting.
So as a result of all of that objective fact gathering, uh, Mr. Soto issued the May ninth, two thousand seventeen cease and desist order, in which he indicates that he has observed a quarry operation has been established and that he orders a cease and desist of that activity. He again repeats for a third time that they must file for a special exception according to the provisions of section thirty-one of the town of East Haven. And then, and that they must file sediment erosion control plans, uh, to be inspected and approved by the East Haven town engineer and, um, you must provide proof that general permit for the discharge of stormwater associated with industrial activities is to be obtained from the Connecticut Department of Energy. There's letters in, in the record indicating that it was, it was not obtained. Um, in April, likely those red letters were, and then in the environmental protection, you must receive certification letters and those must be provided to claim in its own department. Uh, the appellant did not do any of that. They filed their deals and that's what brings us here today. I would now like to briefly summarize the rebuttal to the legal arguments made by the appellants. Oh yeah, I guess, I guess we can, Mr. Soto's made, after the issuance of the May ninth cease and desist, he also made, uh, inspections from the road, correct? So we're going to show you some photos of that and I'll tell you what they depicted. What date was that, Jim?
So.
May seventeenth?
So on May seventeenth, uh, we continue to get calls saying that folks are still, um, that they're still pouring up there. So that got us out again to see if in fact the operation had stopped or not. What you're seeing is, is the kind of rock piles that can be seen along Barella Road. So that, that is the, uh, that is the top of the hill that you previously saw the excavator on. And then again on, you know, June fourteenth, we got another call that someone is, that they're still removing rock from the site and the trucks are still coming in and out. And so while on, on our previous inspection, we weren't able to see that, right here, myself and my deputy, Alan Magrino, we went out and we were able to observe, um, what you see here, which is behind the excavator, there is a white dump truck and right next to that, to its right, is a, like a white building. That is their scale house where they weigh trucks. And that is a truck removing rock from the site. And then these are, uh, site pictures we just drove around the site to see. Just getting updated of the condition. What you're seeing there is, uh, the berm was hydroseated and so the grass is starting, is starting to take on the berm at that point. And as you see, the sedimentation and erosion controls still haven't been, uh, been placed properly.
So those are the facts on most of cease and desist, cease and desist orders were based. I respectfully submit them undisputed. Their pictures, their videos. And the fact that they never filed for a special permit, that they never submitted an engineering-approved document, drawing, analysis of any kind is undisputed. My understanding of what's been presented by these appellants to this board about the safety of their operations is Mr. Alter telling you he believes it to be safe. I looked him up, he's got a law degree, an elementary degree. I'm sure, uh, Attorney Zula will, will advise you, but I think it's appropriate, it's kind of unique hearing to just say that what the role and responsibility of this board is. It is this board's responsibility pursuant to the statutory required hearing to find the facts and apply the pertinent zoning regulations to those facts. In so doing, the board is empowered with a liberal discretion. It is your facts to find based on the evidence presented to you. That's... The appellants submitted, uh, three arguments, uh, as to why, uh, the cease and desist orders were illegal and should not be upheld by you. The first was that they had a pre-existing, uh, non-conforming use and that, uh, that gave them the right to operate a quarry, notwithstanding the fact that in Connect, in, in, in East Haven, um, you are not allowed to excavate, grade, or remove, uh, topsoil without a temporary special exception. The pre-existing non-conforming use, in order to prove that, uh, they carry the burden. And the burden that they must show is that this property operated as a quarry before a town of East Haven regulation governing the operations of quarries, uh, took place. Uh, in the record, in Mr. Sosinski's, um, letter and the amendments there too, um, there is copies of the East Haven zoning regulations, I believe they're dated nineteen thirty-six, which, uh, regulate the removal of sand and gravel. So I believe in order to carry their burden, they have to show that prior to nineteen thirty-six, uh, this, uh, property operated as a quarry. They also have the burden, uh, well, a, a, another, another factor that the court must take into consideration is whether it operated before the zoning regulations, that operation was vanted. Um, I know Chris was able to obtain some aerial photographs of this property, um, and I, and I'd like him to explain to you if Mr. Ringo can ring him up.
Almost looks like frontier.
Explain to the board with that.
So what you're seeing here is an aerial photograph of the property taken in nineteen thirty-four. Um, so it predates the zoning regulations, it's important to, to know that, kind of to establish a, a baseline with regards to proximity of our regulations. The dark and long shape that you see at the bottom, like the bottom center of the screen, that is Mill Page Pond, I believe I got that correct? Is there a way? Page is Mill Pond? So, right there. So this is, uh, Page is Mill Pond?
Right.
So right here, where you see the bend, this road that comes down is Tootucket Road, this road that comes across is Barella Road, and this road that comes up is Barbara Road. And so we'll orient you. This is approximately where the excavator was at. This is about where the access road and the, the rock was cut. So you'll notice now, uh, adjacent to the pond, there's subdivision right here. Again, Tootucket, Barella, Barbara, um, except this is from nineteen sixty-five. And if you'll notice, there's no quarry on this site. Um, and so with the fact that our town regulations, we have regulations, uh, beginning in nineteen thirty-six that prohibit the use of sand and gravel pits in certain zones to include residential zones. But our regulations are then further updated in nineteen fifty-five, and in nineteen fifty-five there's expressly a section that reads almost exactly like what we have in today's section with regards to, uh, quarry operations, sand, gravel removal by mechanicalists and so forth and so on. So it would be categorically untrue to say that their quarry predates any of our zoning regulations since clearly in nineteen sixty-five, there's no quarry there and we have regulations as far back clearly as nineteen fifty-five that would have regulated the use of, prohibited in this zone without first having obtained some sort of approval.
Do you say something to the board where you received those maps and what, what their sources?
Sure, so these maps were, we were pointed in this direction by the town of North Cranford as they have also been fighting a very similar case with regards to allegations that the quarry is a pre-existing, uh, non-conforming use on the site.
And what's the source of where they're asking from?
I believe it's, uh, there, it's a Yukon site that has, uh, a, a great variety of aerial, uh, photographs, one all the way through the nineteen nineties.
So we believe this evidence shows that there was not quarry use prior to the time when applicable regulations applied. Uh, if you find that evidence credible, I, which is certainly within your power to find, that they have not established a pre-existing non-conforming use for this property. Uh, and, and if they don't have a pre-existing non-conforming use for the property, they don't have a right to operate a quarry on the property. And they certainly don't have a right to be exempt from section thirty-one, although my position, which I'll get to is, under any circumstances, of course, they have to be regulated pursuant to section thirty-one because that's the regulation that is set forth for the activity that they're doing. The next argument is that, uh, the town should be stopped, uh, from enforcing its regulations pursuant to a doctrine called municipal estoppel. Uh, and, uh, the Connecticut Supreme Court in West Hartford versus Rochelle, a nineteen eighty-three decision, um, said that municipal estoppel may only be invoked only with great caution, quoting from the Connecticut Supreme Court. "It is only when the municipal agent acts in good faith within the scope of his authority, but in error, that the occasion for invocation of estoppel can arise." So if you as a board find that Mr. Bean Core's letter, which is what they based their estoppel claim, was not issued in good faith or, uh, was not issued within the scope of his authority based on the facts that are submitted into the record, then you as a board can determine that they are not entitled to invoke the doctrine of municipal estoppel. That's the way this hearing works. I respectfully submit that there is a good deal of evidence pursuant to which you can make a finding that Mr. Bean Core's letter was not issued in good faith. The first two documents I submitted in evidence were evidence that he committed felonies in connection with his conduct as a zoning enforcement officer. The conduct for which he was convicted had nothing to do with these appellants and nothing to do with this property. However, you could certainly use it if you so choose as circumstantial evidence as to whether Mr. Bean Core acted in good faith in connection with his services. That's your purview. No lawyer can tell you reject it. That's what, you can take that evidence and use it to make your own determinations. There is also additional evidence that this letter was not issued in good faith. Uh, we submitted in the record, the attorney Joseph Zula wrote a memorandum in connection with being asked by owners of this property whether there was a pre-existing non-conforming use, and he said based on his analysis and evidence, there wasn't. Uh, and, um, we also submitted a, a, a letter from Mr. Bean Core on a, on a, on a CD, uh, which indicates that he was drafting a letter that gives the opposite opinion as he gives in this letter. The appellants did not submit Mr. Bean, any evidence of Mr. Bean Core to support their claiming of municipal estoppel. He didn't come and testify to you that this was articulated in good faith. They presented no evidence of the facts and circumstances pursuant to which the letter was issued. The person who, uh, they, they carry the burden here. They carry a burden to evoke a doctrine that our Supreme Court says can only be used with great caution. And they presented no evidence as to how this letter got issued or why it got issued. There's also questions I have as a lawyer as to what statutory right they had to issue it and publish it. The only statute mentioned anywhere is not in the letter itself, but in a legal publication of it, which mentions Connecticut chapter statute eight dash seven. Eight dash seven talks about a zoning officer publishing something in the newspaper. And I could be correct, if they get rebuttal. These are questions that need to be answered, however. When a zoning officer issues a, I believe it's a, a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, I think it's eight seven G, uh, there's no building permit, there's no certificate of occupancy, there's no explanation as to why this letter got issued. So if you can find, based on the evidence before you, based on your own knowledge of, of what's going on, that this letter was not acted, was not issued in good faith, then you can find they are not entitled to the doctrine of municipal estoppel and they can operate a quarry and they certainly aren't, not allowed to, to, to operate without any regulation, which is remarkably the end, uh, analysis of the four attorneys that appear before you. The other thing that they must show is that what he issued was in the scope of his authority. Again, I go back to, I don't know what he was doing or, or, or what statute he was acting pursuant to, or what timeframe it was, was applicable, or any of that. Um, but I think more importantly, the content of the letter itself, as they would have it then, which is in two thousand fourteen, Mr. Bean Core saying, "There are no zoning issues," therefore stops the town from enforcing zoning regulations for, I guess, ever? Uh, again, clearly there was a change in circumstances here. There was a steep slope that got all of the trees cut down and there was quarry activity on the edge of the slope that caused obvious safety concerns. I don't think any court would ever say that you are stopped from taking action to prevent that activity based on the two thousand fourteen letter because there's a complete change of circumstances and you can't have an estoppel as broad and as wide as they are submitting to you. Their final argument, which is really, um, the subject of my, um, legal letter, my, my opinion, uh, is that, um, in response to our argument, which is, as I said, the question that I thought was really, the other ones I think are, the question's a fact. Whether there is a pre-existing use, that's a question of fact. We've submitted our evidence, they've submitted theirs. Whether municipal estoppel, uh, uh, from Mr. Bean Core's letter, notwithstanding that they, you know, if, if they didn't, if he was an error, Mr. Bean Core was an error, which we believe he clearly was and we've proven that, um, then, you know, they argue that this letter should stop you from, uh, allowing them to operate as a quarry because they've relied on the letter. And that's their argument and I presented my counterargument and you know the facts. Um, the final, uh, argument they have, which is, and that's the question that I answered in my legal opinion, is assuming the appellants can establish a pre-existing a pre-existing non-conforming right, or a law to it, or prove that you were stopped from saying that they don't have that right because of Mr. Biancor's letter, can the town regulate the property's use as a quarry? And if so, to what degree or in what ways? And the legal opinions that they presented by four lawyers, boiled to their essence, were really, quite frankly, remarkable. The legal opinions that they all agreed on were, "You cannot regulate us. There is no provision in your zoning regulations that applies to us." I respectfully submit, for the reasons set forth in my opinion, all of their lawyers are wrong. All of the lawyers agree, because the Connecticut Supreme Court held in the Taylor case that the town has the right to regulate the plaintiff's non-conforming use under its police powers so long as the regulations are reasonable and so long as the regulations are related to the safety, health, and welfare of the town. If you have this pre-existing non-conforming right, you cannot impose a regulation that takes away their right to use their property. They have a statutory right to do that, and you cannot impose a regulation. But that does not mean that the courts have all held, Judge Fuller, who I'm glad they used as an expert because he wrote a book, and in his book, on page 211, under non-conforming uses, he says, "Even though a non-conforming use must be allowed to continue, case law has recognized that a municipality has some right to regulate a non-conforming use as long as it does not unreasonably interfere with the right to continue it." Everyone's in agreement on that. What they... And our position is that none of these issues, quite frankly, should be decided by this board. What the zoning regulations of your town provide is that if someone wants to conduct excavation, grading, or removal of topsoil, glasean, gravelstone, or other natural material, or slashing up trees, unless they fall to some other exceptions that they don't fall into, they must obtain a temporary special exception to do that activity. In doing my research, I noticed, and I put forth in my opinion, in case Kovacs versus Zoning Board of Appeals of New Milford, Judge Kremens, a Superior Court decision issued. And it's interesting, because I talked to Chris about it this afternoon, and he believes that the Board of Appeals of New Milford has pretty much the exact same regulations. Certainly what's quoted in his opinion is the same regulations. And they are... The appellant, who had regulations imposed by him by a permit, was trying to say, "Look, the town's regulations only apply to small operations. They do not apply to a large commercial excavator like me. Therefore, these regulations do not apply to me, and you have no power to impose them on me." The court rejected that argument. And the court rejected that argument because it said that the regulations, plain language, says that on any lot, there shall be no excavation, grading, or removal of topsoil. They don't talk here, as the appellant's lawyer said or any of their experts say, about only small operations. For example, Judge Fuller says in his... Without any citation in the regulation, "These regulations only apply to new uses, such as landscaping and grading of building lots and the construction of buildings and structures and temporary activities that involve minor or short-term improvements." None of that's in the regulation. None of that's in the regulation. And that's exactly what the court held in my legal opinion. And the court held... "In the court's view, to hold that the health and safety of regulations at issue in the present action apply only to the small-scale excavation activities permitted under the regulations, but not to pre-existing non-conforming commercial-scale excavation would produce unreasonable and unintended results. Accordingly, the court finds that the Milford zoning regulations apply to places, commercial excavation operations on the property." And then the other part of my analysis, when thinking about, is that they hired four lawyers to write opinions. And not one of them addressed Section 31.513 of the regulations, which provides alterations or conditions. "The commission, which says that the planning commission may modify, adjust, any standards or conditions set forth above if, in its sole judgment, such adjustment, modification, or deletion is necessary to maintain the purpose of this section." Now, the purpose of this section is to, among other things, "prevent creation or exacerbation of safety hazards, such as sharp cliffed cliffs and unstable slopes, or minimize surface runoff or rainfall at meltwater to prevent injury to adjoining properties resulting from erosion." So these regulations provide the commission the power to change, modify, delete any condition to satisfy these purposes. For example, as in much of the case law, which I cite in my opinion, if someone comes in and says, "You're going to take away my non-conforming use and my right to my property if you impose this death level that I can excavate at." Well, sir, under 31.5.13, I'm going to ask us to delete, and we may. We may not. But that's the commission. That's where it should be held. And if the commission gets together and says, "You know, if we run out of business, we're going to get sued. We don't have a right to do that. Let's delete that, but let's make sure that they have proper erosion plans because we can delete things for the purpose of this." And one of the purposes is to prevent the creation or exacerbation of safety hazards. So this opinion is in the record. I respectfully submit that, based on the facts you can find, if you so choose, and I know Attorney Zullo will advise you as to your broad discretion of what you can do here, that A, they have not proven a pre-existing non-conforming use. B, they have not proven that they are entitled to municipal estoppel because they have not proven that the agent that they're relying on acted in good faith or was within the just, you know, or within the scope of his authority in what they basically say is issuing a letter and you can regulate it as ever. And third, if you don't find either of that, I think you should uphold a cease and desist because in each and every one of them, they were instructed to go to the commission and seek a special temporary... A temporary special exception. They didn't do what they were instructed to do. They have... The law says that the commission has the right to do that. And I would feel very comfortable, based on the opinion I presented, that a Superior Court judge would affirm your decision or at least we would have a great intellectual exercise and an interesting municipal issue. But to circle back to what I said at the beginning, there was no basis for any of the accusations that frankly offended me. And I don't use that word often in the practice of law that was in the first round of the hearing, where there were lawyers telling you that they're civil lawsuits with money that they're going to win on or that there are people acting in bad faith. I respectfully submit to this board that there is none of that here. There is a zoning enforcement officer who receives citizen complaints, that we presented evidence of very, very serious safety problems, that he issued cease and desist orders, that is now in your court, that they have every right to bring to your court. But that's what this case is about. And I would really, very strong submit that the renter of bad faith and money damages no longer be mentioned in these proceedings. I'd like to thank you very much for your time.
Are there any questions from the board, Robert? Can I... Oh, sorry. Can I address Chris or... Okay. All right, so Chris, when you were out at the site and you were questioning the size of the burn, did you consult anyone to come up with what might be a satisfactory size of the burn?
We put that onus on them. I met on site with... We met on site with Kevin White, the town engineer. And we requested of them to provide to us some sort of either engine schematics or some sort of interior certification that the measures that they were taking were appropriate in fact for... to keep the site safe.
It's hearsay, but what Kevin think?
What's that?
What Kevin think?
He was there with us.
Did Kevin think it was big enough? Did Kevin think it was big enough?
He didn't provide an opinion.
No opinion?
But we asked that of them together.
Okay. Now, this is just a general question. I'm not even sure if someone can answer this. Perhaps only the fire marshal. But maybe you might know, or Al, you might know. Does the fire marshal do a check for a safe environment prior to issuing a blast permit?
Generally, blasting permits come in with a blasting plan.
Yep.
So if the planning and zoning commission, other applicants who have asked for blasting rights, usually, there's some sort of check that's done. At times, it's on the size of the grass to be placed on the property that types of charges that are going to be used and so forth and so on are laid out.
Moving the earth to make the burn is also a violation of 31.1, right?
Correct. And they were informed of that. I was fully aware, when we were on site, that what they were proposing to do would be a continued violation of your order.
And that's when you asked them to ask for the special exemption, correct?
Well, actually, I told them that before they proceeded to fill the burn, they should consult their attorney because what they were proposing was a continued violation of what my order was.
Counselor? Chris, was there an application made for a certificate of zoning compliance or otherwise of Mr. Biancor before he issued that letter?
To my knowledge, before Mr. Biancor issued the letter, the only thing that was in that file was a request from attorney Joe for a letter stating that there were pre-existing non-conforming.
And was a formal application made by anybody in front of the issue?
I don't know if a formal application was made for an opinion. I do know that attorneys Joseph Zullo did formulate a non-actual file. There was memorandum in the file prior to the letter written by Frank Biancor stating that they did not determine that it should be a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Generally, would someone proceed in this matter by making an application for a certificate of zoning compliance?
The typical process is that, and it's usually related to some sort of real estate transaction, I get a request from a Realtor or I get some sort of written request from a Realtor and attorney saying, "Hey, we'd like to make sure that this use that's here is legitimate use."
Is there a form for that?
We do not have a particular prescribed form in our office.
Is there a fee for that?
There is a $20 fee.
Is there a fee collected on this part?
I don't know.
I think we're open now, Counselor. I'm going to give you...
Actually, just a second, please. I'll interrupt with you, but I'm sorry. Can I ask you just a quick question?
Sure.
All right. I'm sorry, I forgot my name.
John Conway.
Mr. Conway suggested Frank's letter might not apply, or, excuse me, 87G might not apply to Frank's letter. What's your opinion on that?
The reason I ask this question is because following Attorney Conway reading the statute applies to applicants with a formal application. Why I want to tell you is a formal application.
Right.
That's why I ask the question, so that when you... I mean, statute says with the... So that when you're reviewing the facts, you can decide whether or not that letter was issued as a result of a formal application as a subject of the statute or whether it doesn't. Thank you all.
Counselor? I think at this time, Mr. Conway, what I'll do is... The public hasn't had a chance for any input here. And, Mr. Alther, if you would please, before you have your rebuttal, I would like the... I would like the public to have some sort of input. I think they have an attorney who represented them.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Stephen Sisensky. I'm an attorney, a limited practice lawyer in an office in New Haven, Connecticut. I'm solely here, I'm solely here in connection with the rights and privileges of Joseph Carfora and Gloria Athras, which is a property owner across the street on Barbara Road from this property. I would just like to compliment Attorney Conway, the excellent job he did in explaining the case of the neighbors and the town, defense of the town officials. And this board believes that his, including my, letter in the record, is a beneficial action. I would like to say that if there was no authority for Mr. Biancor to issue that letter in 2014 and publish that notice in the New Haven Register, which was done without notice to the butters or proceeding, which would have informed people that there would have been a notice affecting the property across the street or in the area or in town. So the fact that this proceeding, or any proceeding, or whatever proceeding precipitated this letter for Mr. Biancor was a secret affair, and it was published in a newspaper more than one month after the action was taken. If that letter was not published in accordance with any statutory authority, it's interesting to think that Section 826 of the Connecticut General Statutes might apply, which requires that any action... It's again, 826, that requires that any action by a zoning board, perhaps by extension, an official at its behest, that any action must be published in the newspaper, in circulation in the town within 15 days of the date of the taking of that action. The notice in the newspaper that relates to this property was published far beyond that 15 days. And there's numerous cases I could cite back at my table there that have held that any action by a zoning board, or perhaps people at its behest, any action that's not published within 15 days of the date that action was taken may be invalidated or is annulated, is not legal, not enforceable. Some cases that say that the remedy of the public is to take an appeal of it. However, where there was no notice that there was a proceeding that would have advised the public that there was going to be a notice or a decision, so the public was left without any opportunity to file an appeal because this notice came out of nowhere, much beyond the 15 days that perhaps it was required to have been published in the newspaper. So that may make that Biancor letter from 2014 completely powerless. And of course, I believe that letter was critical to the four experts who testified or gave opinions before this board. I was surprised that the appellants did not address the points in my letter of April 20, 2017, to this commission. I believe the public deserves the answers to so many of the questions that I ask here, including what motivated Mr. Biancor to take this action on behalf of the property owner without any public notice that anything was even being considered with regard to the property that would have alerted people to pay attention to this. So I was surprised that the appellants spent no time trying to establish the validity of that in the light of the difficulties that that person has had that were made public in the New Haven Register, which incidentally reported that Mr. Biancor pled guilty to those charges for, I think you'd say, accepted money, quoting the newspaper, accepted money from at least five individuals. So it is interesting to think that anything that Mr. Biancor has his fingerprints on may be tainted by his admissions and his guilty plea that this behavior was taking place in town. So with that having been said, I want to say that whatever else I was going to say has been subsumed into the presentation by Attorney Conway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone else that...
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to, to speak, and also thanks to Mr. Soto, actually, for doing something Canadian courageous and not, well, as easy or expedient or convenient. But at the request of the planning and zoning folks in North Branford, we've been asked to, to say a few words. There are quite a number of us here from North Branford, and they suggested that they just have one spokesperson, since many of our concerns were common, and our issues are common. And I drew, I drew the short straw, so I'm doing it. Doesn't exclude anyone else from speaking, by the way. And the people, I guess I'm speaking for, range from people who have bought a house in the neighborhood here a year ago, to people who have lived here all their lives, and their families all their lives, people whose houses are about a year old, and people whose houses are 319 years old. So you've got a pretty good cross-section. As you may know, the, the sighting question actually straddles East Haven and North Branford, so we're just on the North Branford side. And it really boils down to two different things. One of them is many people believe that, the idea that there has always been a quarry there is actually not true, and there are people who are happy to testify to that effect, people who have lived there all their lives, in fact, actually lived on a farm for many years, where there's no property, where there's no, no quarry there. 1944 to 52, 1962, and as late as 1985. The brotherhood person in attendance this evening actually worked on the farm, and is happy to attest to the fact that there was no property quarry there, and is as late as 1985. With that aside, what it really boils down to was to, what you're, in the review here.
Please speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because they can't hear you over there, and the recording won't be able to figure out.
Beg your pardon. The second portion of why we're here is the, the issue of the activities in East Haven having a direct effect on us North Branford people, though we don't have recourse through our planning and zoning structures. So, what I'm getting at is, we came here with a reasonable expectation of living in a residential farm zone, or a quarry. I think to a person, no one out here has a problem with the farmers around here. In fact, we support them actively. No farms, no food, right? However, extractive industry is, is a whole nother issue. So it's the, the reasonable expectation of not having industrial extractive traffic, the noise, the dust, the disturbance, the blasting, and so forth. The truck traffic is, is so heavy and disruptive that some people just don't open their windows, even in the summertime. I can tell you that my wife and I do not permit our boys, age 15 and 12, to ride their bikes on our street. It's just not safe. It's a country road, speeding at 25 miles an hour, and you just don't want to be there when one of these trucks is going by. Many other people feel the same way. Some people who are runners in the early mornings simply don't run in the morning, in the wintertime, because they can't get out early enough to beat the trucks, and they don't want to be on the roads with them. There is the material that spills when they make the turns. The most critical ones in question here are where Tuket Road, Mill Road butts into Tuket, and it's essentially the extension of Borelli Road, which you've already seen from here. Making those turns, they spill material. It's dangerous, there's kick-up. A woman here this evening has had to replace her windows twice now because of gravel getting spun up and breaking her basement windows. And it, it's not just a quality of life issue of the noise and the dust and the distraction and so forth, it's, it's also, quite frankly, financial. The two properties at the corner of Mill Road and Tuket are rentals. And very often, they show people around, potential renters, and that when they say, well, you know, in all honesty here, there is a lot of truck traffic here, and that's a quarry, and when they find out there's a quarry there and there's the truck traffic, they say, no thanks. And so that obviously drives down their asking price for their rentals there at the corner. I guess that's, that's at the heart of it. I think we have a reasonable expectation to, to enjoy a residential neighborhood. Now, I understand that we, we eat food, we, we love our farmers, we also use gravel, but this is simply inappropriate to this, to this zone. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen? Is there any way you can get the guy who worked on the farm to actually just make a quick statement that he worked on the farm and there was no quarry?
He's not here at the moment, but I can certainly refer you to people on request this evening. I'd be very glad to do that.
That's fine, the particular guy is who I was most interested in, thank you.
The last name is Dan Freeman. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Well, on behalf of ourselves.
Pardon?
On behalf of all the people who live in the neighborhood.
You can, if you come up to the mic, state your name and address, you can speak.
My name is Deborah Johnson, 919 Thompson Street, East Haven. And, you know, this whole thing is a hoax, you know, as far as we know. What we know is that a guy that worked for the town in East Haven illegally changed paperwork in order to give a permit.
Excuse me, sir, there's no proof of that. There's no proof that he changed any documentation.
Well, how come the documents state that there was no quarry there prior to him issuing a license?
He didn't, he didn't issue any license. All he did was issue a letter stating that the quarry was, was basically preexisting nonconforming. He never issued any permits or anything else to that, to that effect.
Yeah, nonconforming to who, the original owner?
To, no, to the gentleman, actually, the letter states that the people that operate the quarry now, or were operating the quarry, had preexisting nonconforming use. That's what the letter states. And his activities have been questionable.
Well, anyways, the place is just, just going to, they've already destroyed the neighborhood. You know, they slashed all those trees, now all the runoff from the water, they're changing the whole trajectory of the environment, noise, you know. I've been there since 87, and my daughter used to walk that road to go to school. And there's no chance of that now. The road is so narrow, they're destroying, you know, the pavement is all wrecked up, there's noise, you know, all the dust, and we gotta listen to blasting, you know, they're taking away our property values.
Is that it?
Well, I mean, who, who are you? You work for the town?
No, sir, I don't work for the town. I'm an individual sitting on this floor, listening to you, and the applicant, and any attorney that comes here. Now, I ask you to step up, state your grievance. Have you stated your grievance, are you finished?
That's pretty much it, you know, like, those trucks aren't, those trucks shouldn't even be allowed to go down that road.
They pay a state tax and registration, sir, they have a right to transport anywhere they want.
I don't know, I was, I was under the impression that truck traffic shouldn't be in a residential area. To that degree.
Are you done, sir?
Ma'am?
Ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come up, state your name for the record, or address.
Donna Presley, Marjory Drive, North Branford. I'm in that little development that you probably saw on the screen there. And we bought our house in 1987, and there was not a quarry at that time. And I don't even drive along Royal Road, honestly, anymore. The road is always just torn up. Town fixes it, it gets torn up again. And till the cease and desist actually started, you could see at least, at least one dump truck every five minutes coming down to Mill Road. Now, granted, they pay their taxes, they're allowed to drive wherever they want, but as a residential area, having a dozen or more dump trucks going down in front of your house all day long, it gets a little annoying. And they go blasting, and they don't blast the same way the trap rock blasts. I guess there's certain rules when you blast, like, if it's cloud cover, you're not supposed to blast because the, the airwaves go down and make more nuisance, where when they blast, they don't care. They don't care what kind of nuisance it is. Trap rock, I always hear the whistle. I don't hear a whistle with that. The house shakes, we're pretty far away. Again, dust, we're one of the houses, we don't open our doors. And we are probably a mile away. And from the existing quarry they have now, which is nonconforming, it's, it's a nuisance, and it does affect all of our lives in North America also. This group had a truck traffic, where East Haven doesn't have a truck traffic.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening.
My name is Pete Strickland, and I live at 44 Mill Road in North Branford. Grew up there my whole life. And one of the areas that we're talking about is, on the Totucket roadside, is a farm of East of Longtus Spazanos. And as a teenager, I worked on that farm, and there was no quarrying going on at that time. And on the other side, where they're currently talking about was the New Bay Farm, and that also was a dairy farm. And there was no quarrying that I can remember going on, and that's going back to, I can remember back to 1970. So, as far as that goes, there may have been quarry there, but there's been a certain amount of time where nothing has been quarried there. I would hope that you wouldn't think that a photo from 1936, I didn't get to see the photo, but if, if it shows a farmer who was possibly selling fill or soil to make some income along to supplement his dairy farm and look like quarrying, but maybe isn't, you should, they should be looking further as to just thinking what a photo looked like from that long ago. And I would also think that you should look into the power lines that went through there. They were put in, I think, around the 1960s or 50s, and they should be able to tell when they took the land by eminent domain, what was there, and you should be able to open those records, whether it was a quarry or a farm.
You're talking about my tetramony, something like?
Yes, yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello? John Lichardi, 26 Mill Road, North Branford. I just want to second some of the stuff that's already been said. We just bought our house there about two years ago, and we thought we were moving into a rural community, quiet. We just started, I mean, I got a daughter that's four months old, and instead of that, or in addition to that, the amount of dump trucks that are driving on Mill Road make it not a safe place to walk our dog, or to push a stroller. Lindsay had mentioned the gravel that spills out of the trucks, where Totucket meets Mill Road, and as someone that rode a motorcycle for a few years, I know how dangerous that can be, and it doesn't seem like that gets cleaned up in a timely fashion. That's a hazard for people that ride motorcycles in the area. And again, it's just a quality of life. Had we known that there was commercial quarry activities that were taking place less than a mile from the house, we would have never bought it. That wasn't, wasn't even cards for us. So we feel really disappointed that, that that kind of stuff is going on in such a nice rural community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello? John Lichardi, 26 Mill Road, North Branford. I just want to second some of the stuff that's already been said. We just bought our house there about two years ago, and we thought we were moving into a rural community, quiet. We just started, I mean, I got a daughter that's four months old, and instead of that, or in addition to that, the amount of dump trucks that are driving on Mill Road make it not a safe place to walk our dog, or to push a stroller. Lindsay had mentioned the gravel that spills out of the trucks, where Totucket meets Mill Road, and as someone that rode a motorcycle for a few years, I know how dangerous that can be, and it doesn't seem like that gets cleaned up in a timely fashion. That's a hazard for people that ride motorcycles in the area. And again, it's just a quality of life. Had we known that there was commercial quarry activities that were taking place less than a mile from the house, we would have never bought it. That wasn't, wasn't even cards for us. So we feel really disappointed that, that that kind of stuff is going on in such a nice rural community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I think we'll do this. We still, we, now, I think we have to leave the public hearing open, right?
Yeah. Let's finish this.
Okay.
This is Chair Lewis. Obviously, there was a lot of information provided by Attorney Conway, and we're prepared to speak to that. What it asks is that you call a recess for about 12 minutes, come back at nine o'clock, and we'll, you know, respond additional.
Do you want a recess, Congressman?
I'm asking for that.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen?
Fine.
For a minute recess?
Thank you.
Okay.